Our work session started for April 28, 2020. We have two items that we'll be reviewing. The first item is the goal-setting update, so I will just pass it directly to City Manager Rodriguez to review that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I sent you some information about this. We had hoped to do, you know, comprehensive strategic planning this year, but given our demands to respond to the pandemic, both staff and in consultation with you council members, we felt that it was best to put that off till next year. Instead, we'll be doing a more focused goal-setting. That'll also allow us to more fully explore our response to the pandemic. And we have been able to set up that meeting, and it'll be May 20 at 4:00 p.m. And that's all I have on that topic for, unless there are questions.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Any questions from council members on this item? No? Great. Thank you so much for that quick update. We will go to the next item, which is the review of the community survey. And I will just go right back to City Manager Rodriguez for that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share the presentation with you. And then I do have a question, though. It's a long, well, it seems long to me anyway, a long presentation. There is a lot of data. I've done my best to summarize it. We are still analyzing it. But would you prefer to ask questions as we go along? Or have me give you the full presentation, and then we can do questions afterwards?
I think if council members, bless you, Councilwoman Trautman, I think if council members are fine doing it during the presentation, it just helps give context for folks. And then as much as we can keep moving forward, understanding that it's a longer.
If that works for me. Okay, I'm gonna attempt to share this with you. All right, so can everyone see it, Ben? Okay. So, as you know, we contracted with National Research Group to do this survey. And it's a survey they worked with the International City Managers Association to develop, and they do it nationwide. Why should we survey? It has the advantage of giving you information from the average resident. You know, residents are residents, and they don't always have the chance to give you feedback. It also provides benchmarking against our peers. In this case, it's over 600 communities nationwide. We also paid to get more custom benchmarking. And we've got 29 communities from Minnesota, a population of 10,000 to 100,000. Eventually, it'd be nice to do benchmarking over time. And I would recommend not every year. This is a big undertaking, but maybe every third year. We also paid extra to see what the demographic differences are. And there's a lot of data in that. And, you know, we are still processing that. But I do have some summary slides on that. Actually, a lot of summary slides is a lot of data. And then finally, you know, it's so that we can get actionable data. I know you all are communicating with residents all the time and bringing that community perspective to us. Our staff are also engaging in residents and hearing from them. But, and. It can be anecdotal. This is more statistically valid data. Again, it's not to replace the anecdotal data, but just to add to it. The methodology was, we sent it to 2,500 residents. It was three mailings. It was a week apart. 566 returned surveys. That's 23%. That was a really good response rate. For the online, we got 107 surveys, and that is not statistically valid. They had to wait the data because we got less responses compared to our population norm for renters, those that live in multifamily, not white, Hispanic males, 18 to 34 years of age, 35 to 54 years of age, and for work, 3. And in order to do that, they used the 2010 census and the 2017 American Community Survey. One thing I do want to note is this was all collected pre-COVID-19, which is helpful. We do have a survey going out to collect residents' feedback on COVID-19 issues. And Neil is putting that together. Neil and his staff are putting that together right now. We actually got 700 responses on that, so it was really impressive. So the community livability report. We, at first, when I looked at this, this is compared to nationally. And when I first looked at the data, I couldn't figure out why I didn't see where we were lower than our peers on the bar charts, because they were, the differences were really slight in the color. But it was because we weren't lower than our peers nationally. So there is a lot to be proud of in this survey. Our, our, our community characteristics rate really well compared to the national data. Overall, our residents like living in Richfield. Our ratings on livability were really high. Safety is a concern, and it is something that they feel safe, but it is something that is really important to our residents. For quality, nine in 10 reported positively. Eight in 10 reported that they felt safe. And again, 94% felt that safety was essential. Residents felt really good about transportation, and they use our transportation system much higher than our peers. They walk, they bike, and they use public transit. This was one of the benchmarks where we scored really, really well compared to both national and Minnesota peers. Our residents were also really pleased with parks and recreation, so much so that they are willing to pay more property taxes to invest in some of our, our amenities, like improved park buildings, a new Woodlake Nature Center, and a new community center. Even though we compare well on characteristics, and, and this is important because, and I'll give an example. For some, for some things nationally, if you ask, you know, about that service, you're gonna get generally high marks for some things, like fire. You know, firefighters are generally helping you on your worst day, and they're, and they're the heroes. So fire services across the country are gonna get really high remark, high marks. But when you ask people about street, street maintenance, that's, you're gonna get lower marks because people are gonna be like, I, I'm stuck in traffic. There's this puddle, et cetera. So I think benchmarking is really important. But it is just one tool in the toolbox. We also have to look at those characteristics that we may, we may better than our peers. We may rank better or similarly than our peers, but the ratings are still, the percentage is still pretty low. So it just indicates that people are still dissatisfied. It's still, we're still higher than 50%, but these were some issues that our residents rated us below 65%. I don't know that there's a lot of surprises in this slide. I think, you know, we're working on these things. I think they mesh well with the priorities and the action plan that we have. But I did want to highlight them for you. When we get to Minnesota, because everyone in Minnesota is above average, of course, it's higher, it's harder for us to rate better. We still do do higher than our peers on, on more issues than we do lower. There were just two things that we rated more low than our Minnesota peers. And as you can see, 16%, we're, I'm sorry, 4% were higher than our Minnesota peers. So when you look at it compared to the relative percentage rating, so that means our residents are rating our, our characteristics or our services excellent to good, we're still higher than our Minnesota peers by percentage on public transportation, ease of bike travel, snow removal, and our drinking water. Where the two things that we rated below our Minnesota peers were the overall opportunities for education, culture, and the arts, and K through 12 education. So that is, that is our comparison based on how our residents were reporting us, our services as good to excellent. This is how we placed if we were gonna rank against our peers. So for those 29 communities in Minnesota, these are the rankings where we're first, second, or third. And sometimes, some other communities didn't have these. So it's not always out of 29. But these are competitive advantages for Richfield. Our cost of living, our ease of travel, ease of public parking, transit. And because I used to be on that council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pat myself on the back for public transit services. Street cleaning, lighting, snow removal, water, our natural areas, and as a place to retire. These are all the community characteristics where residents rated us in the, in the top third compared to our peers. And this is somewhat similar to how we're doing nationally. But again, it's, it was harder to rank higher against our Minnesota peers. So the demographic analysis, in general, there is a lot of data in here. And we have yet to really dig into it. There are some conclusions that I've tried to show, but mostly I'm just presenting, I'm just highlighting and summarizing it for you. Our department directors will be using this. Again, it's good data for them to have to add to other information so that they can look at their service delivery and how we can do it better. It was difficult for me to summarize this because it is a lot of data. So I just apologize now for, there's a lot of slides. There weren't a lot of differences on livability, so I thought that that was a positive thing. There are signs of inequity in our services. And again, the department directors are gonna need to dig into this and draw conclusions. And this just is one more tool in our toolbox as we work on equity as a city. One of the highlights on this slide is that our customer service ratings for people of color were 16 points lower than our white residents. So, and that males felt most respected. So that's, that's something we, again, I, I don't know that it's information that we didn't know, but it's, it's one more data point for us to, to address.
Can I interject and just say, share a comment? I, to me, that is concerning to see that. And I don't know if we really did know it or not. I don't know, I don't know that I've heard that that has been acknowledged. And it is coming as a data point now. So I, I think it would be great. Just like I've seen in our affordable housing work, as we started to do more research, we did see inequities by race in, in homeownership rates and, and, and other things. And then, you know, I thought it was great that staff really started to kind of share and repeat some of those statistics and information, and then adjusted programming and funding and approaches accordingly. I thought that was great. So I, to me, this customer service rating being 16 points lower for, for people of color than white residents, and then males feeling the most respected, that's, that is problematic. I don't, I don't know if we've heard it. And hopefully, it is taken in the same way, like, hey, this is something that we need to, to do better on. Here's how we're gonna do that. And, and it's, it is a data point, and hopefully, action comes from it.
Are there any other questions on it?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Maria that 16 points is a pretty big spread. That, to me, seems statistically significant, and we need to pay attention to that and do something about it.
Um, I, I absolutely agree, and I think that we are. We are, equity is a major priority for us, and it was a goal. And the work is slow. We are working to diversify our, our workforce. That's part of it. We, we've joined the GARE cohort. We have a team, a CARES team that is working on equity, and our departments are all reflected on that now. They, it's mandatory that a department have somebody on that, that CARES team. I would like to hire an equity coordinator. Given the, the pandemic and the financial fallout from that, we haven't made that decision, but that, that was my top priority for, for my, you know, for, for my hiring, my department, I guess. But yeah, no, I, I agree that it is significant. Some of the other demographic differences are less clear, though. I don't know if you see that, that throughout. So.
And I just want to add one more thing. So this is talking about customer service. So I don't know that it's necessary to, to wait until somebody is hired focused on equity. I mean, we all provide customer service to our residents. And so I think there's just a lot of approaches we can take to say, hey, how can we, how can we look at our customer service in a different way? And, you know, this, the folks don't come to the city very much. So we want to make sure that when they do, that they are getting, you know, treated really well and, and feel comfortable and welcomed. This is not to say that our staff is doing a bad job. It's just to say there's something going on. We don't know what it is. And, and how do we all work towards everyone providing exceptional customer service where, where everybody feels welcome regardless of, of who you are?
And I would say also that I neglected to add that we also are ramping up our Spanish translation. So we have been doing that much more quickly because we've had to because of the pandemic. But we are also doing that as well. But no, I agree. And we, and we are. This, all of this data and the presentation have been given to, to directors, and they're working on it as well. But, and I don't have the exact percentages in front of me, but if I remember correctly, it's, there's, the customer service ratings are still hot. But there is a discrepancy. Is it okay to go on?
Oh, I had a, oh, can I interject real quick?
Yep.
Just two things. I just had a question on the, on the POC slightly higher on positive image reputation. I, I just didn't understand what that, what, what that meant.
So if you look at your comparisons by demographic subgroups report, it takes all the criteria, and then it breaks it down for all the demographics. And then it shows you if a certain demographic is higher than others on certain community characteristics. And so on that, that people of color in the community rated us high on, on our image and our reputation than, than white people did.
Okay, understood. I wasn't sure whose reputation or what that, what that meant. Got it. No, thank you for that, that clarification. And it just, briefly, just echoing what, what my colleagues have said and, and appreciating, you know, that just the equity work is, is slow. I would just, I would say equity work is, is urgent and perpetual. And we're making, we're making lots of changes, and we just continue to be grateful for staff, for the, the bright-neck pace of change that they're embracing. And as we're, as we're making deep changes to our institutions, this is, this is not, this is not the time to say we're too busy for equity, but this is the time to say we're making lots of, we're making lots of structural changes. So now's the time to make equitable structural changes. I know I'm not saying anything that anybody disagrees with, but I just, I just feel that deeply.
Any other questions? Or comments? All right, I'll move on.
Actually, I had one. Um, so the part about the people more likely to stay, was that a question like, or how long do you plan to stay in Richfield? Or what question was that? On livability?
Yeah, so it was, would you remain in Richfield for the next five years?
Okay.
Can I move on? So on the economy. The, um, I lost my place. I, I do wanna. Did I go too far? No. I do want to clarify that, so when it's, when it says older female renters and multifamily are more housing cost burdened, I don't mean that an older female renter that lives in multifamily is more housing cost burdened. What I'm saying is older residents are more housing cost burdened than younger. Female more than male. Renters more than owners. Multifamily more than those in detached. So that's, that's what it, I just had to do it that way to capture all, all of it in a sentence. Otherwise, I would, I would have had 50 slides. Like I said, this, the demographic analysis is really rich in data. So the youngest are most multimodal, and they want an even better system. And the, the, the 35 to 54, they are, they're comfortable with the system, the most comfortable. But then our seniors are, are still adjusting. Richfield, again, is more multimodal than our peers. And I'm just gonna pick out a few highlights on each slide. But I'll pause for questions. Do you have any questions on this one?
I saw on a couple of slides you had certain demographics in parentheses. Can you just clarify what that refers to?
Yeah, sorry, thank you. That's a great question. So for that first one on the economy, that they believe that, that believe in stronger economic health and a good place to visit, older residents and females, again, more than, older more than younger, females more than male, believe that we have stronger economic health and a good place to visit. It was only people of color that believed it was a good place to visit over white people. And so then for the residents that rated the ease of travel and parking more highly, the residents, it's 35 to 54 rated ease of travel and parking more highly, but only owners rated parking more highly. Does that make sense? Moving on. So for community design and utilities, I think that this data, it was difficult to draw conclusions. And, you know, you don't want to make conclusions based on looking at more data. You don't want to make, you don't want your stereotypes to, to influence any conclusions. And so we're still working with department directors. This will, this will be part of the information we're gonna use for goals, for our goal-setting and, and our, our work plan for next year. Are there any questions on this side? No? On safety, this sort of fell off the slide, but. Older residents, this slide was interesting to me because older residents rated EMS services higher. I have not had a chance to ask Wayne, but I would guess that older residents receive EMS services more. And so they're gonna be more likely to rate it higher because they've had a positive experience. You know, I have talked to Amy about this. And so I think that the, the opposite would be true. And, you know, that residents, well, not the opposite. Residents that are 35 years old or older than 35 years old and owners are, and in detached housing, are using our park system more often, and so are rating it more highly. And that, again, that, that's something that we have to work with. Amy and her folks need to do more proactive engagement to have other, all our residents using those amenities. But again, I want to work with directors in order to pull concrete solutions on all this. Are there any questions on this? I think it's positive that the, it was fairly consistent among all the demographics that felt safe. Health and wellness, again, I'm not sure there's, was it immediate, the conclusions that we could draw. And so we're gonna work with department directors to, to provide more information and improve our service delivery. I will note, education, arts, and culture was one of those amenities that were rated more low, like more, were rated lower compared to our Minnesota peers. I thought inclusivity and engagement demographic breakdown was interesting. On particularly the two last bullets there, it seems like you are more likely to rate it as positive if you are not likely to be the target audience. So for example, younger folks were more likely to rate, rake, sorry, were more likely to rate it positively for, that the city took care of vulnerable than older residents. And, you know, older residents are more likely to need that care. Now, that wasn't true in terms of females who rated raising children in Richfield more positively. But there was some information from the survey provider that that could be the case, that people, if they don't experience it, but feel like it's something they should report, they will report it that way. Yep, Ben?
I'll just speak up to say, I, I think, I mean, as you said, it's probably not very surprising. I mean, as a white person, I'm, I'm not going to know all of the ways that minority groups are made to feel unwelcome, or at least I'm not gonna experience those myself. And so I think it's easy, easy for people who are white or in other more privileged groups to think that we're, we're doing a good job simply if we, we see that our community is diverse. But I think, to our earlier comments, that diversity is not just an ability to all live near each other that we've, we've got some more work to do to actually make it equitable. So I think, I think it, it just goes to show how important it is that when we are working to serve a specific community and to address a need for a specific community, just how important it is that they, they have a strong voice in that process so that we, we hear exactly what they're facing and what needs to be addressed.
I agree. And I think that has been a council goal, to bring more diversity to our advisory boards and commissions and to do more engagement. Any other questions on this? So some of this data, like, for example, that younger prefer online sources and our older residents prefer more traditional sources of information is, is what we already know. But again, it's, I think it's helpful to have it as part of a statistically sound survey.
On that last slide, what do you think by more likely to campaign?
Uh, so it just, it just said that age 55 compared to younger folks were more likely to campaign, and the, and of color, as opposed to what, compared to whites were more likely to campaign.
Like campaign in a political process type thing? Or is that what they're talking about?
Yeah, I think it's campaign for a person or issue. I'll find the exact.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, Mary, I'll, I'll get it to you. I believe it was campaign for a, a issue or a candidate, but I'll get it to you. Sorry, it'll take me a little while to find it.
That's fine. I don't need it right now.
So again, I didn't feel like this slide, there was something, there was anything immediate in terms of conclusions. And we're working with department directors to find actionable data and figure out how to improve that service delivery. Some things I think are consistent with what we already know. And, and that we're already acting on. Any questions on this? So on the customized questions, the folks that were most likely to support an additional property tax for facility improvements were age 54, 35 to 54 female people of color renters in attached housing. Those folks that were more aware of emergency rules were females over 35 and owners in detached housing and and younger and people of color feel more, and in detached feel more safe using roundabout. So I don't think, I don't think there, these all support what we've heard. Questions? So the online survey results, I think again, we expected this, these are the folks that are engaged with us. They are more white and wealthier and more likely to be owners than the weighted random results. They are more white and wealthier than the raw random results. But the age distribution was closer to the population norm, which was interesting. They are generally less positive than the random results. I've noted the exceptions. And I've noted what they're, they're very concerned about. And a lot of it has to do with being open and transparent. Our commercial areas, affordable housing was a big issue and opportunities for education, culture and the art. So I think the key takeaways, we do, we do well compared to our peers. I do think our strengths line up with our values, but I also think their areas of improvement line up well with our, our priorities. I, I still, we're still digging through this data. It will help inform us to customize our service delivery so that we have less inequities. Residents definitely want us to focus on safety, economic health, parks and recreation and the natural environment. And I, and I've talked about the inequities in our service delivery and working on that. So overall, are there questions?
Just a comment for me, I think, I know you already said that the directors were planning on, sorry, and you wading through this more, figuring out what the action items will be and bringing that back as we're doing the, the goal setting process. Um, and maybe this was already the plan, but can we just make sure that that's, if it's happening in the goal setting meeting that we are specifically naming, like this is something that came out of the community survey? Or if it is, I guess, an alternative format, but maybe this creates extra work to just have like a bullet list of, here's the, I don't know, the seven or 12 action steps? Or maybe it's just three clear action steps that are doable. But I think, I think it's important that we have a clear sort of cause and effect of like, these are our action steps from this survey. Certainly the survey will inform less directly a lot of our decision making, but I don't want to lose the specific sort of results of this.
Yeah, well, yes, and absolutely, we can do that. And, but I do wanna, I don't want to lose that the, this is good news. This, I mean, this survey was very, very positive. And they, you know, there is something for each department to be proud of in this survey. I also want to thank Neil because he did a great job communicating, communicating the good work that the city is doing. And I also think that council should be really proud of it because we have very high marks on confidence in Richfield's government and the direction that the government is taking. So yes, absolutely. And there are, like I said, there is data to dig into and understand better. And the department directors are using this as one more tool to refine their service delivery. But there's a lot of good news in this report. Or I should say, in these five reports.
Councilmember Sappel.
I think like to piggyback on some of that, it's important to pay attention that we don't know, always know what we don't know. And we sometimes listen to the loudest voices, whether that's the people that are upset and about something when it's a minor thing. But also there's a lot of people that are not, apparently not getting the same customer service. And we didn't realize that and we need to do something about it. So yes, it's very positive and we need to remember that when we're getting like multiple emails on an issue that a lot of other people are fine with. But also we need to pay attention to the results and fix things like the customer service. And so I think it's good to ask, do those surveys because you don't know what you don't know. And at least now we can go ahead and fix some stuff.
I agree.
I just had a couple of points. So City Manager Rodriguez, thank you for sharing all of that. It is very exciting to see our residents are very happy with our community here in Richfield and their services. And you are right, there is a lot to be proud about. And you know, I think about how can we share this with our partners? So I know that there was something around K-12 education, which was a little bit concerning. But, but also looking at more interest for cultural and art experiences. So these results are not only a reflection of the city government, but they're also a reflection of our community as a whole. And so how can we share these results with our business partners, our nonprofit organizations, our, our education partners, different groups within Richfield? So that we can, outside of the city government, also use this as information to help build a more robust community. So that would be great if we could share this. And that's something also to the council members and community members. Just a task for us to do as well is to share this and share, you know, the great, the great news that, that I think we know, right? Serving in government, but people are really happy in our community. And, and then how can we build off of what we have? And then I, I know that I probably sound like a broken record and I'm sure maybe other council members do too. But it is, it's very clear that the work of equity is our work. And it is just not an add-on. It is not an add-on to any of our services. It is how we deliver all of our core services. And I just want to keep pushing ourselves in all ways and on all levels to say, this is our work. We have a very robust, diverse community in many different ways. And how can we really grow our ability to deliver core services in ways that are thinking and centering equity? That's just, it's just essential. We just have to do it. And yes, you know, there, there is an infrastructure and staffing that absolutely supports that. And it also includes doing what we do now with the resources we have now in different ways and, and, and looking at how we can do that. So a lot of great news, a lot of good things. And it just keeps highlighting equity work is our work. Equity work needs to be done now. And, and it's something we gotta keep focusing on. So thank you very much. It's very exciting. Are there questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Thank you to everyone who helped make it happen, everyone who's been compiling the data. I know Katie, that you've been doing a lot. I know Blanca and Neil played a big role with parts of this too. I, your, your point from earlier is well taken that there is a lot of, a lot of positive. I'm the annoying person when things are 97% good, I focus on the 3%. But I want to give a special shout out to the Public Works. I know, I was very aware in the, on the slide that listed where we were above or below our Minnesota peers, all four of the above categories were public works areas of our, our water, our transportation, our plowing. So shout out to them. We already knew that they're great, but glad to have it statistically confirmed.
Yeah. Oh, City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. I appreciate you calling that out. I, I've had it as a bullet to talk about, but I really do think Public Works hit it out of the park.
Our residents are so fortunate. We are just extremely fortunate as a, as a whole community to have the great services, the excellent staff and everything we have in Richfield. And this is just a clear testament. And I want to thank all of the staff and everybody that's been doing that for years and years and years and generations of leadership over time. And, and also thank our residents. And, and you see it right now in times of crisis, in a time of crisis, we see our city staff coming together and just doing exceptional work. We see our residents coming together, our school districts, all of our organizations coming together. So it's just multiple confirmations that we really are very fortunate in, in our city. Thank you again also to, to all the staff for that. Well, I, do we have other questions, items, discussion points? We're early, we're done a half hour early.
I have a procedural question. So are we're gonna log out of this meeting and then call back in on the other one? Is that correct?
Yes. Yep, we have a, a separate meeting set up for the, the council meeting at seven. So you guys can take a little bit of a break if you just, you know, want to end early and, and then log back in probably about 10 minutes prior, just to make sure that you have everything up and running.
Okay. So before I adjourn the meeting, any last comments or questions? Councilmember Trump.
Thank you. I just had a, a quick forward-looking procedural question. Could you remind me, City Manager Rodriguez, how, how often, is this an annual survey that we're going to administer now, the, the satisfaction survey?
I, I don't think we can afford to do it annually. This was not a, a cheap undertaking. And, and I think annually would be too much. Yeah. I would say every three years, possibly every two, but I really think every three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Trump, uh, S. De Sappel?
Um, you mentioned the, the COVID survey. When do you think we'll get the results on that? Because that was a really good turnout of people in a short amount of time.
I know. I was really pleased to hear that. They're crunching the numbers right now. I, I, I think he said he was gonna get the results maybe next week. Sorry, Mary, I have it somewhere. No, he didn't give me an estimate, sorry.
In the works.
Yep, in the works. The numbers are now, but I was really pleased with how many.
All right. Seeing as we have no other questions, I will adjourn our study session and we'll see each other a few minutes before seven for our city council meeting.